Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, this is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, November 4th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abulosli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Kadelia?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you, I would note that Councilmember Brandt is joining us electronically this evening. Okay, first on our agenda, we have a proclamation for veterans' remembrance, November 11th, and I've asked our veteran, the mayor pro tem, to read the proclamation.
Okay, whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history, and whereas since the establishment of the original thirteen states, Americans have been willing to fight and die to preserve their individual rights as guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and whereas we owe a great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation, and whereas throughout the generations their sacrifices have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual, and whereas for many that sacrifice ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example for all oppressed persons of the world, and whereas, in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, I, Colette Atkins, behalf of Nicholas Abulosli, mayor of the city of Marion, do hereby call upon the residents of Marion to observe the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month with expressions of gratitude to all veterans known to them and to further extend this gratitude to their families of deceased veterans and to solemnly remember sacrifices of all those who have fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. Let us commit ourselves to the task of promoting an enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a section which is set aside for comments from the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. This is the time to address the council, if there's anything on the agenda that is not a public hearing that you would like to discuss with the council.
I'm the mayor in city council.
Please state your name and your address and then proceed.
Hassan Halush with All Trans Engineering, and then 5099 Elderton Drive in Marion. I'm here to just talk about items E8 and E9. We wrote a letter to council regarding that item, and we're here just to answer questions when you are ready to discuss it, if you have any questions, and we, this is something that the city has allowed in the past, and the default for engineering is to not recommend approval because this can only be approved by council. It is for a driveway on Winslow Road. So, we're here to answer your questions, if you have any, as I said, the letter summarizes everything that we need to know.
Does anyone have questions, Ramatul Halush?
We can ask questions when we discuss it too.
Well, so there won't be time for questions and answers at that time, so I'm asking council members if you have any questions right now for the applicant.
Sure.
This is the time to ask them, go ahead Renee.
So I still stand by what I said on Tuesday, although Mr. Trey Harn was going to look into, or maybe it was Mr. Winslow, when those houses that currently have driveways there were platted and approved, that could change my opinion, and so I have no questions until we have that information. I think that was coming back tonight, so, but thank you for being here.
The ones that you asked me that question, there was some way.
It's a question I asked for staff, they were gonna go back and find paperwork, so.
Certainly they've been approved, some on the south side, because you know, I live there, I drive it, I see it. So the houses on the south side of Winslow recently approved and houses have been recently.
Right, but what we were talking about on Tuesday was the fact that they might have been approved years ago to have the driveway there, and now they're getting built, which is why they're going in now, but it might have been something that was a different precedent, I'm not sure, I don't even know, I'm just saying I need that information to help inform my decision. I appreciate that you're here, but I don't have any questions for you personally, but thank you.
Thank you, any other questions, Will? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll proceed with the, is there anyone else to address council? Rachel, are we still accepting?
No, if people want to comment, they would need to be in person.
Okay, so it's back to in person, thank you. All right, we'll proceed with the consent agenda.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows, items A1 through G2, resolutions numbers 30009 through 30032.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, items A1 through G2, resolutions 30009 through 0032. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved, for the next session I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abulosli's abstention. This will include items B1 through F1 and resolutions 30033 through 30041. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abulosli's, I don't know why I can never say your last name, I'm so sorry, abstention as follows, items B1 through F1, resolutions 30033 through 30041. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved, I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Move to approve resolution number 30042, approving amendment number three to task order number one with title based in Government Consulting LLC to extend order timeline to June 30th, 2022, and increase the not to exceed amount to $300,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30042, approving amendment number three to task order number one with title based in Government Consulting to extend the order timeline to June 30th, 2022, and increase the not to exceed amount to 300,000. Discussion.
Yes, your honor.
Go ahead Grant.
Yeah, thank you, Amal, just to clarify our discussion from last Tuesday, this is an incremental increase of $50,000 to the original contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 30042, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
May I make a motion to approve old harmless agreement with Mike and Billy Plattner regarding a live music and garage event on November 6th, 2021 at 1550 Hunter's Greenway?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the old harmless agreement with Mike and Billy Plattner regarding a live music event on November 6th, 2021 at 1550 Hunter's Greenway. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to direct staff to solicit bids for demolition services associated with the Public Services Maintenance Facility.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to solicit bids for demolition services associated with the Public Services Maintenance Facility. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
May I move to approve ordinance number 21-22, amending chapter 164 regarding the fire prevention code, this will be final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to solicit bids for, I'm sorry, to, it's moved to second to approve ordinance number 21-22, amending chapter 164 regarding the fire prevention code. This is the final consideration of this ordinance. Discussion. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 21-22, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved. Next on the agenda is a public comment period regarding a no parking request on 15th Street near Emerson Learning Center. So the public comment period is open, and do we receive comments?
We receive one comment from Janelle Brower with Marion Independent School District in favor of the measure.
Rachel, it's hard to hear what you're saying.
We receive one comment from Janelle Brower with Marion Independent School District in favor of the measure.
Okay, and so do we close the public comment period then?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else with a comment on this, on this topic? Have you received anything?
No, that's the only correspondence we've received.
Okay, all right, so we'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to the motion.
Your honor, I move to receive and file PAC report regarding no parking request on 15th Street near the Emerson Learning Center, this is the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harper, seconded by Councilmember Jensen, to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a no parking request on 15th Street. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to receive and file the report, you say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 30046, establishing a no parking zone on the west side of 15th Street from Ninth Avenue to Tenth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30046, establishing a no parking zone on the west side of 15th Street from Ninth Avenue to Tenth Avenue. Discussion.
Yes, your honor, just a quick question, if I remember correctly, part of what's driving this is that that particular street segment is relatively narrow compared to others?
Yes, sir, so the current street is only 21 foot back to back, per the current fire code that was just approved on the previous action that required minimum is 20, so that one additional foot doesn't give enough room to park a car.
Okay, all right, so this is really driven by fire safety in response?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any additional discussion, questions? Okay, we'll vote, all those in favor of approving resolution number 30046, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the 2022 Storm Sewer Project, resolutions 30047 through 30049.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2022 Storm Sewer Project, including resolutions 30047 through 30049. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the 2022 Sidewalk Ramp Project as follows, resolutions 30050 through 30052.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2022 Sidewalk Ramp Project, including resolutions 30050 through 30052. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved, have we lost Councilmember Brandt, or is he still?
I think he stepped away from his computer.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 30053, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,544,679.60.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30053, approving the contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,544,679.60. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 30053, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
May I move to approve resolution number 30054, amending the chapter 28E agreement between the city of Cedar Rapids, city of Marion, and Lynn County regarding Tower Terrace Road?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30054, amending the chapter 28E agreement between the cities of Cedar Rapids and Marion and Lynn County regarding Tower Terrace Road. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 30054, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to receive and file a request for a driveway on Winslow Road, requested by Hassan Halush, All Trans Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file the request for a driveway on Winslow Road from Hassan Halush at All Trans Inc. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the request, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 30055, approving a driveway access to Winslow Road for Ibrahim's First Edition, Hassan Halush, All Trans Inc.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30055, approving a driveway access onto Winslow Road for Ibrahim's First Edition. Discussion. Go ahead Renee.
Your honor, I would just like to ask if data was found based on the discussion Tuesday.
Yep, I'll go through it real quick here, I'm gonna leave my mask on, I'm getting over the flu here, so I don't wanna, okay, I was probably spreading it Monday unfortunately. I'm gonna go back and do a little history here, Hunter's Ridge First Edition, which is located north of the subject property along Winslow Road, you have all those homes up front, Winslow back up to the golf course, that was planted in 1995. Obviously 95 was a different environment up north Marion, didn't have the traffic. Winslow Road was probably just a local street, which we allowed driveways on to, and then fast forward to 2005, 10 years later, it got classified as a collector, which changed the, and it might have been a little bit before that, but I couldn't quite find the information on that, but definitely by 2005 it was classified as a collector. With collectors, obviously we'd try to limit driveways at that time. So we've had a few approvals of driveways since Hunter's Ridge initial development. The first one was in 2001 with the Huntington Hills Edition, first edition, that provided for three lots fronting onto Winslow Road, that's about a quarter mile to the north. There's only two homes on that now, there's one vacant lot still. 2005, we had the Hunter's Ridge 15th Edition, which created three lots on the Huntington, or three lots onto Winslow Road, and that's about a third of a mile to the south of the subject site.
Is that south of the condos?
Yes, that'd be south of Par Circle condos, right there, yep, there's that new home that just got all the glass.
What year was that?
That was, 2005 was the first, was the 15th Edition.
Okay.
Then the 16, I'm sorry, then the 16th Edition is two lots immediately south of that, and again, that was two additional lots, and then most recently with the Bridge Creek Edition, there's a single lot in 2020 on the bend of Winslow Road there, you have the tall trees, there's one lot that was approved, fronting onto Winslow, and that was right by the basin, it's really hard to, you wouldn't know it's a lot there.
Is it where the farm was?
It's actually, yeah, it's pretty close to where the farm said, there's a detention base on the west side right there now, and there's a triangle, pie-shaped lot in there, so that was allowed access up Winslow as well, so five, six, so nine lots post Hunter's Ridge have been approved, all those lots have been approved with a brand-new subdivision of undeveloped property. So the only difference between, well, the difference between this property and those properties is those are undeveloped properties, this is one that's a platted property that's proposing to be split, so that's really the biggest difference between the requests, but so I've got a nine post Hunter's Ridge and 20-plus streets or sidewalks, driveways on the Hunter's Ridge Winslow Road, kinda north that area.
But is it 20 since the collector classification?
No, no, it's only, it's a, since the collector classification 2005, you take out hunting, you get five, you get about six.
Six, and they're all, they're all south, right?
And they're all south of, they're all south of the bridge there. Yeah, so those are all the ones I could find immediately, then we've had, I think every other driveway up there's been existing. I don't think we've had any requests that have come in, development-wise, with hunting, I mean, they've all just done their own street network, they haven't asked for driveways, so it's just, the ones that have been presented have been approved, so.
And could you, could I just ask one more thing?
Please.
Could you, so this came to council to not recommend approval for the driveway, correct?
Correct, yeah, per the policy, because it's a collector, policy says, just no driveways.
Per all of what our paperwork says today because of that, so this would be an exception.
Collectors, a collector's a collector, so when they wanna deviate from that policy, and I'm not saying that our policy is a one-size-fits-all.
Sure.
And it obviously is not, we have, the council has approved ones in the past, it's, we take it as a case-by-case basis. So, the subdivision proposed in the image, and just to give you a history of why it's coming forward, existing house fronts on Winslow Court, the owner of the property would like to subdivide the property, build on that lot to the north, obviously downsizing is quite a bit of house he has there today, downsizing, building to the north, and then allowing him to sell the property with a little smaller lot, as opposed to about an acre and a half they have now, they'll have a half acre on their new lot, about an acre on the existing lot.
Okay.
So that's why the requests come, we're kinda, this has to go to the planning zoning commission, pending council approval of the driveway.
So it hasn't gone there yet?
No, we, I didn't wanna take it until we got your okay, one way or another regarding the driveway, otherwise we're just kinda wasting everybody's time.
So I'll just thank you for all of that history, we had a lengthy discussion on Tuesday. I, I'm gonna stick by what I had said before, which is I don't believe that we should put a driveway there for a variety of reasons, this is actually the ward that I represent ward for, and in the term that I've served, I've handled several calls from different houses north of there on Winslow though, related to speed, a lot related to speed, the police officer, police chief could verify, I know they've been asked to do more monitorings, that's the main reason, I do get that we look at these on a case-by-case basis, and the other five that were approved on those case-by-case bases were much more to the south, the character is a lot different, and a big concern for me is just changing the character of the current neighborhood that's there, the way it was, you know, designed, the way that it sits, where it is, what it backs up to, and so for me, I think it would, it just, it doesn't fit the rules that we have, and I think it detracts from how it was planned out originally, so I'll be voting no for those reasons.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna make some comments, but I'm just gonna say ditto with what Renee said because those were exactly the comments that I had in mind as well. Again, this is a lot intended, as an acreage in that neighborhood, it was not intended to be subdivided. Where this is, is gonna be, it's north of that bridge and north of the Tower Terrace Access, that's gonna be off Winslow Road in the future, the other ones are in a low-traffic area south of the bridge, so for that reason I would also vote no.
Other comments?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, go ahead Grant.
I'm just recognizing that there's been drawn some distinction of low-traffic south of the bridge versus north of the bridge. I have a different question here, as I look to the south along Winslow, where it turns to the west direction, I noticed that that property that is principally undeveloped on the south, what is there, the south side of Winslow, I think that's Engel Mooney property. Kinda what is our, what is our thinking about how that property would potentially develop and then interconnect with Winslow Road?
It'll have, it'll have, it'll have, obviously it's gonna have access, it'll have, it'll have a driveway-style access, it'll, it'll likely be a private driveway, I'm sorry, one of two ways, it'll likely be a private driveway serving multiple parcels or multiple buildings at pre-approved points, and those points will probably be, those driveways, I use that term, I use the term driveway, but it's a, it's gonna be a big driveway serving multiple things, it'll be lining up.
Private, private street.
A private, well.
Be a street.
It'll serve as a street, but it'll probably be developed to street standards. Those entry points will probably be near or adjacent to or across from some of those existing public streets across the way on Winslow, we'd like to try to, we don't wanna, we don't wanna offset, so they'll probably be in, they'll probably be one on the north side of Winslow, and that, and they'll probably be one toward, toward the west, toward Excelsior Middle School, somewhere in that area, we've seen a lot of different, we've tried to game out a lot of different concepts on it, and the placement of those will all be based on speeds and the radii for visibility and all that, so, it really depends on the, on the use, if it's a higher use that changes versus a lower intensity use.
So what, so thank you Dave, what, so you've described there kind of our philosophy relative to how the commercial property would develop with essentially commercial development street intersecting with Winslow in that area, and that I perfectly understand, as I just survey the balance of Winslow from that point on north, there is one privately-owned property, there are two city-owned properties for detention basins that are there, and as I just scanned the rest of the, of what is along Winslow, there really aren't any more residential properties directly. Directly on Winslow.
Yeah, outside that one farmhouse.
Yes.
Farmhouse lane, I, I didn't fail to point that out, but there is one farmhouse lane there.
Yes.
I assume that farmhouse lane will probably either, it'll either stay with the development of that property or will get incorporated into a bigger development, more than likely. But I should've, I should've pointed that one out, I failed to.
So I, all I'm really wanting to draw to my colleagues' attention is. I, I think this is the only probability. The, the only parcel that has the probability of really requesting this kind of variance. That, that's really what I just wanted to have in front of everybody's mind as we think through this. And as I had stated. On Tuesday. I was still in a state of dazed and confusion on this item, and so I've spent some time thinking about it. And I've, I've, I'm at the opposite opinion at this point. For what potentially is only one property on Winslow that could possibly request a variance of this type. So I.
You're leaning towards approving?
I am.
Okay.
For, for just that reason, so it, I guess Dave, if. If you tell me that your view is, is that there are other residential properties that could be put in. And/or request logically this kind of variance along Winslow in this area. I, I, I'll maybe suspend that opinion, but right now I'm leaning towards approving it.
I will, I will only give you one property that they might try that, and that will be the, the Neemer property to the, to immediate west of this property. It's a large, it's a multiple, I'm gonna say five-plus acres.
Yeah, I've been there.
Okay, well, I mean. Likely, in all likelihood, if that property is redeveloped, they drop a little cul-de-sac bulb in there and call it good. Unless somebody wanted to come along and carve it into two, two-and-a-half acre lots. We still, we still have to, per policy, we still have to say no to the driveways and try to encourage them to do some sort of bulb. But if I'm a developer, I wanna reduce my costs as much as possible, I don't wanna do that. So, I can see them asking, but. That'll likely just be a little, little bulb nub in there, and they'll get four or five really nice lots on that property. Someday.
Well, that, so that, that property at fifty-ten Winslow is, I mean, that is a, a, a good precaution, so thanks for bringing that up.
But I, I think that's gonna be, I think that'll develop more traditional with a, with a cul-de-sac bulb, but I mean, again, if somebody hit with the. If somebody wanted to subdivide it into two or three lots. They're gonna try to, I assume they're gonna try to avoid that cost of city improvements as much as they could. But.
Okay. So you're saying it's not likely it'll have driveways onto Winslow?
I don't, I don't, I don't see how it's.
Just answer, to answer.
I don't think, I don't think it will, but I'm not gonna say.
Sure, you don't know, right, yeah.
But it's a big enough parcel that you would wanna put multiple lots in on that plot.
I would wanna maximize.
And hence, then one. Street. Attachment to Winslow.
Develop one-acre lots, you really need to, a third of an acre is about as big as you're gonna get just based on the cost to develop nowadays, so. It'll be a little tiny bulb with a lot, a lot, but half dozen lots in it.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for indulging my. Curiosities.
Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
I, I would, I would also point out that the, the property south of Connection and west of Winslow is undeveloped where the farm, where the farmstead is. And it goes, it stretches along the south side all the way to Tenth Street. When that plat comes in at some point someday, we, we would also limit. The access points and expect that that development come in, develop similar, similarly to like Par. Circle and, and, and that area where the, the lots would back up too. So just, I mean, if someone, if they had an alternative to that, they would have to do the same route. So, just, just so there's an awareness, like internally, that would be our direction to the developer. To limit the access not only to Winslow, but there's limited access on Connection as well. And, and it's not uncommon for, for us to do that in these areas, so just, just so there is an awareness.
Councilmember Grant has a question, and then we'll come back to you, Grant.
Okay.
Will?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask about the section south of Connections, is that, I, I guess I was under the impression that was zoned to be commercial, but that's, that's not, that's residential?
Correct, that's land use designated for, for residential. And I don't believe it's, it's not currently, I think it's zoned for agricultural today, but it's a land use designated for residential.
Sure, okay, I thought it was commercial at one point, but, and then a couple other questions, so. You said the Hunter's Ridge sixteenth was the last two houses on the east side of Winslow? What year was that?
Uh, that was two thousand and fifteen.
Fifteen? And then, has the, the other, what are there, three other houses on Winslow Court, have they been notified that the owner of this one is looking to, to split the. Northern section off? Or is that not done yet?
They'll, they'll get a courtesy notice tomorrow. For planning the zoning commission if the council approves the driveway.
So if the driveway does not get approved, it does not go to any further at all, it's.
There's no access to that lot, so it, it'll sit until they can figure something else out.
Okay. I will, I will. Echo what I said on Monday that I personally, I don't see an issue with putting the driveway in there and splitting that off. Like I said, I think there's been some precedent set along Winslow, and Grant brought up a great point that I was also gonna bring up, that it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't look like there would be any other. Residential lots that can put a driveway on Winslow going forward, so this should be it.
Okay, back to Grant.
Ju-, just a question, just, and again, as a, as a point of comparison, so that parcel that is south of Connection. And it is targeted for residential development, would that then have. Likely streets, individual streets connecting into Connection Avenue?
Uh, ye-, yes, it will have, uh, it'll, it'll have one on Winslow, probably near Par. And then it will have one connection, I assume Grant, you're looking at the GIS? On your, okay?
Yes.
Okay, there's a, there's a little stub to the north of Connection Boulevard there. Um, I don't, I believe it's called a, what is it?
Lucy Lane.
Lucy Lane. Uh, to the north, so there'll, there'll be a street onto Connection Boulevard at Lucy Lane. And then there might be one more to the west. Off of either Connection or Tenth, it gets a little, it gets a little, the land. There's a lot of issues to, as you get to the west, all the water and slope, et cetera, so.
I, so just, again, for situational awareness, I was just trying to draw these points of comparison and. Kinda quantify what the level of opportunity above and beyond this particular request that we have this evening.
Yeah, now, and now the north side of Connection, because you, you did bring up north side of Connection, Connection, it's. It's a collector as well. Uh, there's condos up front along there, and there's been limited driveways approved at the plan on those as well. Not every unit gets a driveway, they have kinda shared access, and. You can see that's sitting undeveloped right now, but. Those have had some. I think maybe four total or five total driveways. Shared amongst all the homes, we use access connection that way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll vote then, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number three zero zero five five? Please say aye.
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 All who oppose, say no?
No.
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 I believe we have four ayes and three nos, and the motion passes. Motion's approved. Okay. Uh, we'll move on to. Tower Terrace project updates.
Yes, Your Honor, so to go with the twenty-eighty that was previously approved. I'm just gonna drill down a little bit about the section that was just bid. This is all just informal items, because this all goes through the City of Cedar Rapids, so they do the actual resolution, approving contracts and bonds. They'll do the contract administration, the City of Marion will do the inspection. So again, we're talking about Cedar Albarnet as the total project, the phase that was just bid is from Meadow Knolls East, if you can go to the next slide, Terrell. So it's this area in red, so you can see the existing county subdivision is gonna stay as is, and then basically the grading utility package. Will be graded from that point to the roundabout at Albarnet and Tower Terrace. So it's a, a multi-year project to do. All of it, and so it would work in several phases, if we go to the next slide. So they did receive, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bids on this Boomerang was the low bid. At two-point-nine million dollars, in your packet, there's actually a detailed breakdown bid tab, just like I would provide if the project would normally go through the City of Marion. So you can compare those prices, it has a late start date of April fourth of twenty-two with two-hundred-and-forty working days, which for reference, that's two years. So, the grading could take that long, should they need it. It shouldn't take that long to do the, the grading, there are some box culverts that get put in. And then there are fifteen hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages, next slide. So, again, breaking this down, so this is to get the whole thing put in there, so Phase A grading utility will be twenty-two through twenty-three, if they use all the time allotted. Phase A paving, then, we will bid that soon. But again, that won't start until after the utility and grading is done. But Phase B could be happening at the same time, and that's the grading utility. Basically from that county subdivision all the way to, to C Avenue. And then Phase B will follow that. With paving, so it could be done concurrently. With the Phase B paving and some of the grading utility, some of that is. Well, all of it is through the CNPO, but a portion of that swap money is only available, I believe it's fiscal year twenty-four. So it may have to be delayed a little bit to actually get that intersection in and tie into C Avenue. So the total estimated cost, and this again, there's a detailed spreadsheet in your packet. Is twenty-one-point-two million dollars. Of that, eleven-point-one million of it is swap money. So those of you not familiar with swap money, that is where we take federal dollars that have a lot of hoops tied to them. It goes to the state DOT. The state DOT keeps that money because they're used to those extra hoops, and then they take the state money. Swap it with the federal money, and they give us the state money that has less hoops to jump through, to make it a little easier. So one of the few times that legislation has helped us a little bit. So that's what swap, so we're just swapping federal dollars for state dollars. To make it a little easier, there's still some regulations that apply, but not as many when we go through that. And then as Cedar Rapids, Lynn County, and Marion decided, all of the money will one-hundred percent go to construction costs. So the land that we've already acquired through the properties. We're paying that through our own funds, through local option sales tax or bonding. And so, like most projects, there's an eighty-twenty split for the actual swap dollars. Obviously, it's only about fifty-fifty in this case, because we couldn't get enough money to pay for it all. And then I think there might be one more slide, or is that it? That's it, okay. So, there's a lot more information in your packet to drill down on those details, but wanted to give you a high-level overview of that project. It is moving forward, all, all of that slow, it is moving forward. So in the spring, there's, there's a possibility they could start before that. But I know Boomerang has a lot of projects right now, so I'm guessing that's not gonna start till April.
Any questions? Input? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Mike, thank you for that primer on hoopage reduction. Appreciate it.
It's always beneficial.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have a public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on any item, whether or not on the agenda. Has anyone asked, is anyone here to address council? On any topic? All right. And we'll close this section of the meeting, we'll move on to council comments. Start with Councilmember Brandt.
I do not have any this evening, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Councilmember Harper?
Done this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Jensen?
Uh, yeah, just, I was able to attend the Marion girls volleyball semifinal game yesterday with my granddaughter. And unfortunately, they did not win. But again, I congratulate them for making it that far. They've got a young team, only a couple of seniors, so hopefully they will be able to play there again next year. And hopefully, the tournament is still in Cedar Rapids next year.
Okay.
I got nothing.
All right.
Just a reminder to fall back on Sunday, maybe it would still be light out next time we're meeting, but don't forget to set your clocks, we all make it to the next meeting on time.
Councilmember Sternett?
Uh, thank you, I would like to congratulate Grant Harper, Steve Jensen, and Sarah Minster for their new roles. They will all be great assets to the council, so I just wanna congratulate everybody, thank you.
My part, I wanna thank the voters for approving the extension of the local option sales tax, I think. There's a graphic that, that the city put out that showed all the projects. The money was used to, at least in part, to fund, and it's a really. Incredible list of projects, lots of street work, of course, and infrastructure work, but also lots of community betterment projects that. Maybe couldn't have happened without the local option sales tax, library is one of them. So I wanna thank the voters for seeing the value in that and for approving the extension. Today, I attended the visitation for Mayor Hapgood's. For Mayor Greg Hapgood. He served as mayor a long time ago, but he spent a lifetime of supporting Marion and promoting. Good things in Marion, so our condolences to his family. And to the city. Recently attended a couple of really great ribbon cuttings, Hy-Vee renovation. As well as the Sheets Forest Draper renovation of their, of their building. And both of those. Companies have been in Marion for a long time, have been, are really great supporters of the community. I think Sheets Forest Draper is a hundred-and-twenty-year-old company in Marion. So appreciate their commitment to Marion and to growing their roots in Marion and growing with the city. And congratulate them both. And Hy-Vee, of course, is, never says no to the city for anything, they're, they're always at the forefront of donating for different projects and, and being a great part of the community. We had a new restaurant that is now fully open in Uptown, the Hipster. Understand it's getting great reviews. So lots of great things happening, let's keep reaching higher and working together to. Advance our city. With that, we will. Move on to the motion for the closed session.
Here, and I move to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition and litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one dot five one J. And Section twenty-one dot five one C of the Code of Iowa.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding land, land acquisition. And litigation as permitted under Sections twenty-one-point-five-one J and twenty-one-point-five-one C of the Code of Iowa. And we have the legal counsel's statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Sections twenty-one-point-five-one C and twenty-one-point-five-one J.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from council members before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of adjourning to closed session, please, I'm sorry, yes, roll call.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Wasli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Kadelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternett?
Yes.
Okay, we're now adjourned to closed session, we'll return to open session upon completion, thank you for joining us.